I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We note the roll.
Noted.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Noel. But what I'd like to do is amend the agenda tonight. We'd like to add on item number 10I, and that is
10I.
Water system vessel repair. That's Clerk Wright.
In our practicing in the past, what's been recommended to us is to vote this motion down and then present a new motion.
Okay, call the roll.
Trustee Colvin.
No.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
No.
Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Supervisor Curtis.
No.
Clerk Wright, no, and Trustee Charles.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendment. Item I under New Business, Water System Vessel Repair.
Next. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item number six. Public comment on items not on the agenda. This is where we have members of the public that can come up to the podium and speak. We limit it to three minutes. The board cannot answer any questions. They'll take notes, try to respond later. But any persons in the public, yes, sir, come on up to the podium, please.
Good evening. I'm Mick Steiner, and I live in Oxford Woods here in the community. And I am requesting that Oxford Township develop and approve a grass length and weed ordinance. This ordinance would apply only to homes in subdivisions. The presence of noxious weeds and long grass is detrimental to public health, safety, aesthetics of the community, and of property values. Nobody wants to live next to a home that has long grass and noxious weeds that have taken it over. I've contacted five realtors, and the basic message that they got across to me is that noxious weeds and uncut grass can impact the value of the homes in the immediate area right there by as much as 10%. So if you have a $300,000 home, it's going to take a loss of about $30,000 if you want to sell it potentially, if you're able to sell it. This summer, one of the yards in Oxford Woods had not been cut in months. Thus, I received complaints from the local neighbors and other residents throughout the subdivision. The ordinance officer was contacted, and he sent a letter to the homeowner asking him to cut the grass. Of course, he didn't have any leverage, so he couldn't compel him to do it, so nothing happened. The grass remained uncut after he had sent the letter. Our neighboring townships of Orion and Independence both have grass length and weed ordinances. It is time that we follow their example and adopt a grass length and weed ordinance that will stop the blight in our neighborhoods. One of the reasons that Detroit failed and other large cities is that people didn't care, and we don't want that to happen in our community. In conclusion, I encourage you to approve a grass length and weed ordinance that will help keep our neighborhoods looking attractive and protect our property values, and to do that as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to comment? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, folks. My name is Ray May. I'm also an Oxford Woods resident, and Mr. Steiner is referring to a home that's about three houses, four houses down from me and across the street. And, you know, the grass is like up to here. And the folks there had, even next door neighbors, had talked to that family to, hey, could you like mow your grass, please, because it looks really bad compared to everybody else keeps their lawns very well manicured and kept. So I'm also hoping that the township will consider an ordinance suitable for such issues like we have had in our subdivision. Other than that, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like wish to speak? Seeing none. I do have a letter, but it is from Mr. Steiner, and pretty much was read the same way. Mick read the letter for us, so I'm just going to put it into record. If that's it, item number seven, 7A, Fire Department. Fire Chief Schultz Retirement Memo. Pete, you want to stand up and tell us what this is about?
Evening Township Board. My current contract with the Charter Township of Oxford will expire December 31st at midnight. Following a lengthy period of consideration, I've decided not to seek a renewal of my contract, and I will be retiring at the end of the year. I have completed 14 years as chief of the Oxford Fire Department while serving on the department for 46 years. I leave the fire department reassured by the knowledge that will continue to grow and provide excellent level of service that the Oxford community expects. The department has a staff of highly trained and experienced individuals that will respond to any emergency or need for service that may arise. I recommend that you consider the appointment of Assistant Chief Matt Majestic as my replacement. I believe that Matt has the knowledge and the qualifications to lead the department in the future. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve as your fire chief and a member of this great department for the Oxford community. Thank you.
You did that all under three minutes, Pete.
Yeah.
He's been practicing.
I look for a motion.
Sir, could I have a public comment on?
Um, I'll allow it.
On the. Evening Board. Kevin Snell, President of the Oxford Fire Fighters Union. I just wanted to publicly thank Chief Schultz for his 46 years of service. On behalf of all the membership of all my guys who have put in a lot of years of this department, I just wanted to thank him for his commitment to this community and wish him good luck in his retirement.
Yes, Margie.
Okay. I make a motion to accept with regret the request for retirement for Oxford Fire Chief Peter Scholes. His retirement will be effective December 31st, 2022. He faithfully served the township and village as a member of the fire department for 46 years, 14 of which were spent as fire chief. As part of this motion, the Charter Township of Oxford wishes to express its profound gratitude to Chief Schultz for his tireless commitment to helping others, his unshakable loyalty, his consummate professionalism, his rock-solid dependability, his decisive and unflinching leadership, and his willingness to sacrifice for the common good. For almost five decades, Oxford has been able to count on Chief Schultz to be there when we need him. He has served us, he has led us, he has protected us, he has made us safer, he has made us proud. Oxford cannot thank Chief Schultz enough for everything he has done to shape our community and to transform it into a wonderful place to live, work, play, and visit. We wish him well.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Payne, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Roll call.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Good job, Margie.
So.
Yes, Trustee Payne.
I make a motion to promote Oxford's Assistant Fire Chief Matthew Majestic to the rank of Fire Chief effective January 1, 2023, with a new chief contract to be brought to the December 14, 2022 Township Board meeting for consideration. As part of this motion, Oxford Township Supervisor Jack Curtis and Majestic are authorized to conduct a search to fill the Assistant Chief position, which includes interviewing candidates, negotiating an employment agreement, and returning to the Township Board with a recommendation.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Payne, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Welcome to retirement, Pete. Call me anytime, and enjoy it together.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks. Okay, item number eight, Sharp Engineering Report. Engineer Sharp had an excused absence tonight. He sent an email to all board members. I'll just read five or six of the highlights here that he wanted to talk about. The first one is Fire Station Number Three. Trees have been cleared and grading is performed on the property. Work is anticipated to be completed by mid-November. Next step will be to solicit bids for drilling a well that can be utilized to fill tanker trucks and the approach and crosswalk over the M-24 road right-of-way. Number two, M-24 Sanitary Special Assessment District. Design of the sanitary sewer will be completed this month. Easement and permitting process will begin in November and extend through the winter months with bids scheduled for early 2023. Number three, Maloney Street Bridge. The bridge structure has been set. The Road Commission of Oakland County continues to install the brake walls and prepare the road for paving. Paving of the road is anticipated to be completed in early November, with additional construction continuing into late November. Safety Pass, Ray Road, North Oxford Road. Project is fully designed and ready to bid, waiting to see if infrastructure grant is approved for funding. And Seymour Lake Road, C.J. Carnacchio, our Grants and Communications Manager, is applying for design grants to extend the path to Seymour Lake Park. Manitou Hills Residential Project is 18 homes. Infrastructure currently being installed. Roads are anticipated to be paved in mid-November. Number six, Water System Issues. Oh, one of them's on the agenda. Pressure Vessel Three at the Dunlap Water Facility will be repaired over the winter months if approved by the board, and Pump Number Three at Oxford Woods Facility is undergoing repair. Those are his updates. Item number nine, Unfinished Business, 9A, Safety Path Maintenance and Bid Recommendation. Treasurer Ferrari.
Board members, after last meeting, the Safety Path Committee kind of regrouped and retraced our steps and redid this process. We sent the bids back out, and we received two bids in the same amounts that we'd received before, and before use of motion for consideration. I'd like to make a motion to award the Safety Path Maintenance Services Bid Aaron's Lawn in Order, the amount of $20,000, pending receipt of the required insurance certificates. These funds are to be expensed to the telecommunications fund, account number 239-807-890.000. Contingency.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, Trustee Payne.
Nothing.
Oh, I'm sorry, hand up. No questions, I'll have a roll call, please.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Thank you, board members.
Okay, item 9B, Investment Policy Resolution Amendment. Treasurer Ferrari.
Board members, when we were sending out our investment policy to kind of see who was interested, we had a couple banks that liked to be involved, and three that chose not to respond. So if you're in favor of cleaning that up, I make a motion that the Oxford Township Board Trustees amend this Approved Township Depositories Resolution, effective October 13th, 2022, include as the appendix to the minutes. Treasurer Joseph Chief Ferrari is also authorized to address any follow-up implementation.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Yes, Trustee Charles.
Joe, is this just for deposits?
And investing.
And investing.
Correct.
Could you verbalize the investing policy just succinctly?
We adopted the amended one last meeting. It just basically allows the township to deposit monies in certain different funds and certain different investment vehicles.
Anything specific to that that... Besides the fact that you can deposit it?
No. What do you mean by specific?
Well, I didn't know if there's certain types of investments that are
Yeah, that's all detailed in the policy.
Excluded and whatnot.
Okay. Yeah, that we adopted last month. That is correct.
Okay, that motion carried, right?
Nope, we didn't vote on it.
We didn't vote on it, okay. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Okay, now, do we have to take item 10A and do each
Each one separately.
Separately? Okay, crowd, get ready for this one.
Yes, this is quite interesting.
New Business, Resolutions, Treasurer Ferrari.
Guys, this is putting everything on the tax roll for winter. We do it every year. We always see the board's approval to put anything on the tax roll. Your first one is
Delinquent Water, 2022.
So under that, let me hold on here, let me get to where I need to be. Give me one minute. There we go. Delinquent Water. I move to approve the 2022 Delinquent Water Resolution as presented in the amount of $72,218.70 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Okay.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yep.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles.
Yes.
10A2, Delinquent Water, 5% administrative fee.
I move to approve the 2022 Delinquent Water, 5% administrative fee resolution, as presented in the amount of $3,069.94 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
2022 Annual Drains and Lake Levels.
I got to the delinquent water tip.
Oh, we went to 2022 Delinquent Water Tap Fee, Riverwalk.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2022 Delinquent Water Tap-in Fees for Riverwalk as presented in the amount of $2,076.28 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? I have one. Our tap fees are $6,000. Is this partial payment somebody owes us?
Yep. But back when we put Riverwalk on, we allowed them to pay it over time.
Okay.
I think it's the last payment for those that chose not to pay it.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
2022 Annual Drains and Lake Levels.
I move to approve the 2022 Annual Drains and Lake Level Resolution as presented in the amount of $37,999.22 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions?
It's, I have a question before you go further. Joe, isn't there the 69.27 with the D in our
No, because that's not on the same roll. That's a special roll, just like the one 28.41 for, that's a special roll.
Okay.
That goes on with or without the board.
All right, thanks.
Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Noel.
Yes. 2022 Installation of Indian Wood Lake Level.
I move to approve the 2022 Delinquent Indian Wood Lake Level Resolution as presented in the amount of $1,031.44 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
2022 Installation of Weed Control for Squaw Lake Canal.
I move to approve the 2022 installment of the Weed Canal for Squaw Lake Canal Resolution as presented in the amount of, oh, there, where's my somewhere, $3,137 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. Motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. 2022 Installation of Weed Control for Clear Lake and Squaw Lake.
Susan, you were correct before, I messed that one up. I move to approve the 2022 installment of the Weed Control for Clear Lake and Squaw Lake Resolution as presented in the amount of $13,996.59 and, on the avalon roll, and $128.41 on the DNR pilt roll, authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
I have a motion. Second. And a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
2022 Installation of Weed Control for Lake Mickelson.
Hold on, guys. I move to approve the 2022 installment of Weed Control for Lake Mickelson Resolution as presented in the amount of $21,350 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Trustee Charles.
Yes.
2022 Installation of Weed Control for Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake.
I move to approve the 2022 installment of Weed Control for Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake Resolution as presented in the amount of $30,850 and is authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
And Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Item 10, 2022 Delinquent Sewer.
I move to approve the 2022 Delinquent Sewer Resolution as presented in the amount of $121,455.24 and authorize it to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
2022 Alkview Estate Special Assessment District.
I move to approve the 2022 Alkview Estate Special Assessment District Resolution as presented in the amount of $8,355.97 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Noel. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trustee Charles. Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
And Trustee Noel.
Yes.
Okay, item 12, 2022 Delinquent Oakland County Roads.
I move to approve the 2022 Delinquent Roads Resolution as presented in the amount of $11,500.77 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 winter tax roll.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Noel.
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes. Jack, can I address that one thing Susan wanted me to address?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2022 Annual Drains and Lake Levels Resolution as presented in the amount of $69.27 and authorized to be placed on the 2022 DNR pilt tax roll. the amount of $69.27 and authorized to be placed in the 2022 DNR Pilt tax roll.
A second.
I heard, my motion was by Treasurer Ferrari and the second was by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
I have a question. Joe, how much is that total up to closely?
Uh...
$368.49.
Close.
For everything?
Yeah.
$332.145.90.
Thank you. A lot of money.
Thanks, Susan, for reminding me of that. I just wasn't thinking quite right.
Okay. Item 10B, 2023 holiday schedule. Board members in your packet, where the 2023 holiday schedule for closing of the township offices for observance of those holidays? With the motion?
I move to approve the Charter Township of Oxford 2023 holiday schedule as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
And Trustee Nold?
Yes.
10C, Halloween Trick or Treat Hours. Board members, the following motion is offered to confirm the Halloween Trick or Treat hours for 2022, uh, 2022 in Oxford Township. They are set for Monday, October 31st from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m.
I move to set the Halloween Trick or Treat hours for Oxford Township from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on Monday, October 31st, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. Are there any questions?
I do, just a quick one.
Yes, sir.
Do you know what the village has set?
I do not.
I assume, but that's a guess. They have the same hours, but I'm not sure.
I did not, uh, I asked them if they wanted to change it to Sunday and they said no. And I failed to get their hours. I'll confirm that tomorrow with them, let them know what we decided. Um, item number...
We gotta vote.
Oh, vote, okay. Um, roll call.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Thanks for keeping me straight.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Uh, just a quick question. Will there be cider and donuts at the fire station? On Halloween?
There will be cider and donuts at the fire station between 6:00 and 7:30?
Just usually he announces it and he didn't announce it this time.
I'll second.
Seems like he's retiring or something.
I think he's checked out.
Okay. Now we can move on?
Yep.
Thank you. 10B, employee health insurance funding. Clerk Wright?
Uh, every year the township has to renew their insurance policy and as part of the requirements of Public Act 152, the township has three options they can choose to exercise. One of those is a hard cap where there's a set amount for, depending on the coverages, whether it's single or a couple or, or, uh, family coverage, or they can do an 80/20 plan or opt out. In past years, the township has chose to opt out of the provision for that. So, um, with that, I will move that the Charter Township of Oxford exercise the opt-out provision which allows the local unit of government, the Charter Township of Oxford, to determine the contribution amount for healthcare coverage insurance for the 2022 slash 2023 plan year.
Second.
I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Trustee Payne. Any questions? Oh, I thought that hand was going up, Margie.
Sorry.
Seeing none. Roll call.
Uh, Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Item 11E, employee health insurance renewal. Clerk Wright?
Yes. Board members, uh, this is a renewal of the existing plan we have in place, Blue Cross Blue Shield. It's the Plan of 1500 Plan. Uh, there hasn't been no change from the previous year on it. Uh, one thing to be aware of is we have four divisions or group, uh, groups on this, on this plan. Uh, two of them are from, uh, previous retired, uh, employees of the community and, uh, they, they are, uh, bound by contract agreements to be covered on the health insurance. So with that, I'll move that Oxford Township renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 0000, Oxford Fire Department, and Group 007011799, Division 0002, Oxford Township Employees with a Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HRA PPO Platinum 1500 Plan effective December 1, 2022, and authorize Barron's, Hendricks, and Stoyt to forward the appropriate paperwork to Blue Cross Blue Shield to activate the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum 1500 Plan. All members enrolled on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HRA PPO Platinum 1500 Plan shall contribute 5% of the premium cost effective December 1, 2022. Also, the Charter Township of Oxford shall fund a health reimbursement arrangement, Section 213D, plan account effective January 1, 2023, and cover any additional expenses incurred, including but not limited to deductibles, coinsurance, emergency room visits, and prescription drugs. Further, Oxford Township shall renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 0001, Oxford Police Retiree, and Group 007011799, Division 0003, Oxford Fire slash Police Retiree with a Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum 250 Plan effective December 1, 2022.
Could you repeat second that?
Okay. I have a motion by Clerk Wright, a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Uh, Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Item F, BSNA, Remote PZE Implementation and Training. Board members in your packet, um, we are moving forward and like your approval, uh, for BSNA purchasing and installing the software featured called Planning, Zoning, and Engineering. This PZE feature ensures every single step of the complex construction project is handled properly. The PZE feature will allow the building department to work together seamlessly in the same platform and has capabilities to access documents and update, uh, information in real time, use notifications, reminder, and, uh, chat directly on the platform. Uh, the PZNE feature will assist in the operation of the building department and attached cost proposal, which was, uh, I don't believe is correct. Uh, the amount shows $4,400. The amount should be $5,500 because of the training users, uh, was not, uh, added correctly at the total. Um, so the required amount is 5,500, not 4,400, but we're looking for, um, approval of this purchase.
I move to approve the quote from BSNA Software, the amount of $5,500 for remote training and remote setup of the planning, zoning, engineering software for the building department.
I second that.
Whoop, wait.
Sorry.
This 5,500 amount to be expensed to account number 249-289-970.003, completed programming.
Go ahead, Rod.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Moved by Treasurer Ferrari, seconded by Rod, Trustee Charles, I'm sorry. We're on a first-name basis most of the time. Uh, any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Okay. Item G, Oxford Woods Well Pump Number Three Replacement. Uh, Board members, uh, the, um, Board authorized the Water and Sewer Committee, uh, to make emergency repairs and, uh, we proceeded to move ahead with these repairs. The estimated cost was $40,000. Now we're coming and looking for forgiveness and approval of up to $40,000 for well pump number three.
I'll make a motion to approve up to $40,000 for the, uh, pump replacement for Oxford Woods Well Number Three.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Payne. She got in there. Um, any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yeah, yes.
I almost jumped the gun.
Yeah, dude.
Okay. Uh, Item H, Authorization to Purchase Trees for the Oxford Township Cemetery. Uh, Board members, uh, in the past, we had, uh, approximately 28 trees cut down. We've had a generous donation from ITC and we've moved some funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to the Cemetery Committee. Uh, we do not have a total cost of the trees because we are in communication with the village to, uh, find out if we could plant them in a boulevard. We found out we cannot plant them in the boulevard between the sidewalk and the street due to the water main. And now we're wrestling with how close to the sidewalk, uh, in between the sidewalk and the first grave sites. As you're all well aware, we don't want to start digging holes to plant trees and find Uncle Jim buried there. So...
I move to authorize the Cemetery Committee to purchase and plant trees on the north side of the Oxford Township Cemetery. The cost of the trees to be paid from approved American Rescue Plan Act funds and donations.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Clerk Wright. Any questions? Seeing none. Roll call.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we added Item I, Water System Vessel Repair Report. Uh, Board members, today we received at, uh, 350, uh, the estimated cost of repairing the last water filtered vessel in our water filtration plant. The, uh, estimate is, has come in approximately $300,000. Uh, we're searching for that, uh, we're, we're asking for approval to go ahead and make the repairs to that water vessel.
I'd like to make a motion to make the repairs of the water system vessel in an amount up to $300,000.
Second.
With the money coming from where?
The water fund.
Okay.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, there's a potential these monies could be coming from the reserves at Oakland County.
Yes.
We, we don't know that yet, but, um, either way...
It's still a water fund. No ARPA money?
No.
No. Not at this point.
Yeah, whether it's county or the, the township, it's coming from the water fund. We know that. Whether it's the maintenance or from the reserves, we don't know that yet. Uh, was the motion was made. Who seconded that?
Uh, Trustee Nold.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Uh, Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trustee Nold?
Yes.
Clerk Wright?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. And nothing was removed from the consent agenda. Item 12, Public Comment. A second call to the public for comment on items not on the agenda. You have three minutes, pal.
Good evening, Board. Uh, basically, I just wanted to thank you for your, uh, support and confidence in me to take over the reins, uh, of the Fire Department. I'm excited. Uh, my family's excited. Uh, I can only hope to continue, uh, the advancement and professionalism of this department, uh, that Chief Schultz has started and put us on a, a wonderful path. And for that, I'm thankful to you and more so to Chief Schultz, uh, for his guidance this past year and a half to help me get settled in. I really appreciate it. I thank you and I thank you, Chief. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that wish to comment on anything? Seeing none. Board of trustees' comments. Start with Catherine, Trustee Colvin.
Um, well, I'd like to thank Chief Schultz for his service and, uh, we wish you well. I'd like to congratulate, this is what Chief suggested, um, look forward to being with us for a long time. Um, I would also like to say for the public, there is a comment period on, um, a certificate of need process. Um, the, the public can comment if they go to the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Um, there's a link on the, uh, Oxford Township Facebook page, um, where you can go and comment. And I would urge the public to ask this, uh, committee to allow local, um, control of this issue so that the local township can decide whether or not a hospital is needed in the area. So, that's all.
Thank you. Trustee Payne?
Um, regarding the grass and weed ordinance, um, I believe there is an old, a copy of a draft, um, that's tucked away in somebody's file. And I would like to request that this be, item be put on next month's agenda and that the draft be brought forward so we could review it, look at it, either send it out to the attorney, do what we need to do, have a discussion about it. I'd like to have a discussion at board level on this item. So, and thank you, Chief, both chiefs.
Thank you. Trustee Nold?
I'm in agreement with the, uh, bringing forth if there's an old draft for us to review on the grass weed, uh, ordinance in Oxford to see if it is, is a good fit for the community. And I'd like to thank the Fire Department, the two chiefs for their dedication to work.
Thank you, Trustee.
And their families.
Treasurer Ferrari?
I would echo that. Thank you, Pete. Uh, it's very well. You've done a very good job for us. We really mu- very much appreciate it. Matt, welcome aboard. Looking forward to working with you. And I agree with what Catherine said. I'd like to have us be more involved in that con process. Uh, somebody had to re- recently utilize emergency services. I'd have much rather have utilized it in my community than driving to Rochester. So I have to say.
Thank you. Um, Trustee Charles?
When he smiles, I don't know how to take it. Anyway, and by the way, Pete, just because you're retired doesn't mean you have to skip DDA meetings, okay? He enjoys them so much. Um, and thank you both, gentlemen. Seriously. A couple of quick things here. Oxford Addison Youth Assos-, uh, Group, which, uh, township representative there, we met last, uh, last week. Uh, the caseload is relatively light right now. We welcome to board a new member of the committee from the school system as Mrs. Lamond has moved on. And a second one here, the board will be excited to know that the Spongey Moth Committee met today at, uh, Mr. Wright's, uh, office to discuss the upcoming, uh, Gypsy Moth, I'm sorry, Spongey Moth endeavors that we're about to be engaged in. November 1, we're having a meeting here. We, uh, offered to Oakland County and I guess at Macomb County too to use this facility, uh, as a training site. So, that's it. And my end.
Okay. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, as, as well as the board, I'll, I'll mention, uh, congratulations, Pete, on, on your retirement. Uh, I guess it's bittersweet for me. Good to see, see you move on and enjoy your later years, but, uh, sad for not serving the community. But on the flip side, I believe we've got a very competent chief coming in. Uh, I know the, um, grueling exercise you went through to get here as an assistant, so I'm sure that we will be in great hands moving forward. So, um, good for you, Pete, and good for you, Matt, and we'll look forward to mov- moving forward on that. So, congratulations to both of you. Um, a couple of other things. Um, Sean Villigan is in the audience who awarded the, uh, Safety Path bid too for the maintenance. He's been taking care of our cemeteries now for, uh, upwards of five years, I believe. And, uh, and I think, uh, over the years, you can see the condition of the cemeteries,